All right. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council in regular session. This is Monday, May 18th, 2020, and ask our city recorder to please call.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Council President Freeman?
Here.
Counsel Herrera?
Here.
Counsel Kohler?
Here.
Counsel Parsons?
Here.
Counsel Reed?
Here.
And Counsel Smith?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Would you please rise if you are able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Special Orders of Business, I don't believe I have anything to add. There's nothing on the agenda under Special Orders of Business. Nope. So without we will go then to that we'll go then to committee report. I don't believe we have anybody zooming in from committees and they haven't been meeting yet, but that is going to change here shortly. For public testimony, the time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for public hearing. We do not have any public hearing scheduled for this evening. Is there anybody who has signed up to Zoom? Okay, and did we have anybody submit anything in writing in advance to the meeting? So I did receive one email and it was a request for giving us the opportunity to possibly use Volcano Stadium for a group in the park as a drive-in rather than as a walk-in. So this is from United Way and in partnership with the Kaiser Volcanos. And it's a request that I'm going to be forwarding to the city manager to bring back at a later date to follow up and see what I know that drive-in has been used successfully in other areas to have social events that are also physically distant. So that will be something that will be coming back to council for our consideration. That will take us then to item 8A, which is administrative actions scheduling in-person city council meetings. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Attorney.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, so Chris and I have been working a lot, obviously, on the COVID-19 situation and the emergency declarations. And one of the issues that we discussed in the last week or two is the council meetings themselves. And of course, the council can control this. So far, the city manager has done emergency declarations ratified by council. But obviously, the council meetings themselves are totally up to you folks. And so I set forth a real brief staff report indicating that we would take this opportunity rather than the city manager just telling you when he thinks you should meet. The you folks can go ahead and decide. And I would divide this into kind of two questions. One, when you would like to have an in-person meeting or at least partially in-person meeting. And that can be a specific date or not. You can choose to just put that decision on hold entirely if you want to. And then the second part of the question is how do you want to do it? And I was talking to Tracy earlier today. She and I believe it was the April 4 meeting where we had some real good social distancing laid out. Tracy and Dan did a good job with the tape, if you recall, and people were spread out through the room. And so do you want to do something like that again? I will say, and we might have some other more technical people on the line, that the part in-person, part Zoom thing is not likely to work very well. We haven't solved that. If the will of the council generally is to go ahead and meet in person, but there are some counselors that wish not to be there in person under the council rules during the emergency declaration. Those counselors have the right to do that. We may need to do that by phone, though. That seems to work. So that's kind of laying out for you the process in terms of how you folks might want to wrestle with that tonight and what direction you might want. The recommendation is to discuss that and give us direction on the when and the how of in-person council meetings.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions about the staff report? I'm not seeing any hands up. So I believe that the first thing we're going to need to address, oh, Counsel Herrera.
Uh, can you hear me? Can I hear you?
We're having difficulty hearing you, Counsel Herrera.
Can you focus? Me neither. Okay. Well. What? Counsel. Can I hear you? Never mind.
So Counsel Herrera, David is going to come over and see if he can refresh your audio visual. So he'll be there shortly. So what I need from people is coming a meeting here in council chambers. That will be on June 1st, would be our next council meeting for regular session. And whether or not we are going to do it in a physically distanced in-house or if we're going to continue on Zoom for all So that's the decision we need to make. And Council President Freeman will be running that meeting as I will be out of town. So I need to get a sense from all you all. Are you ready to do a physically distanced meeting here in council chambers? Or would you prefer to continue on Zoom? Opinions?
Mayor Clark?
Counsel President Freeman?
Thank you. So you, it may have just been me, but I heard you talk about June 1st, but then I didn't hear anything else after June 1st.
So, okay, I'm not, my audio is not doing, there we go. Is that better?
That's much better. Thank you.
Okay. June 1st is our next regular session. So the question is, shall we do a physically distanced meeting here in council chambers or shall we do it by Zoom? Opinions, Counselor Kohler? Counselor Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a, are you able to hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Just the technical difficulties that we seem to have every single week, like just the last five minutes, makes me want to say I'm ready to come down to City Hall and practice social distancing and meet in person.
Thank you, Counselor Kohler. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor?
Counsel President Freeman?
I would agree with Counsel Kohler. I am fine with resuming in-person meetings on June 1st in the council chambers with social distancing as established in a previous meeting. I think the staff did a really good job of spreading all the counselors out. The disadvantage I would say to that is our city staff end up in the chairs within the council chambers, which is not a bad thing. It's just, I guess for me, I like having everyone in our space, but if that's the worst thing that happens, you know, there could be other things. So I would echo the June 1st in council chambers with social distancing.
Thank you, Counsel President Freeman. Counsel Reed, I thought I saw your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, in the chat session, we're all kind of weighing in. And it sounds like we all pretty much agree that that's a good idea unless there's any good reasons to not. And it seems to me that, you know, it is important to get these technical difficulties figured out in the eventuality because as we all know, this does have, you know, the threat of resurgence. And so, you know, I don't think we should abandon trying to figure out the technicalities altogether. But I think that there are better ways to do that than council meetings.
Thank you very much. And I also see from Counselor Parsons the agreement that we do a physically distanced meeting in-house on June 1st. Is there anybody who will feel uncomfortable doing that? Please either raise your hand or let me know. And if there is, if there are one or two that really feel uncomfortable, we can accommodate. We will find a way. And if nothing else, we can do telephone to make sure that the vocal is clear. And we will find a way to do that as well. So it sounds like the decision is to move forward with a physically distanced meeting here on campus, June 1st, for our next regularly scheduled council meeting. Is that the main decision we need to make tonight, Shannon? Or is there anything else we're going to decide going forward? Will probably be as a result of our work session, hopefully in July, to talk about lessons learned from COVID-19?
Mr. Brown has his hand up.
Mr. Brown, no? Yes.
I believe it was an accident, so. Madam?
I did not raise my hand.
We're watching.
So I wasn't quite clear. Is that, is that my consensus then or?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so is there no objection then to doing it that way?
I've not heard from anybody that there is objection. Again, we're having some difficulties with Counsel Herrera, who probably is tired of that as well. There's been many attempts to get his system operating. And we need to make sure everybody can fully participate. So given that, if he has concerns about being physically distanced and so forth, I believe we can accommodate him here on campus.
Very well then.
All right, hearing no objections, then we will be back face-to-face at a physically distanced setup on June 1st. All right. Apparently I can be heard. That's awesome. All right. That will then take us to item 7B, which is the Charter Review Timeline. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Attorney.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and Council. As you know, we have, the Charter Review Committee has been meeting for about five months now or more. And we have gone through a lot of detail. I want to thank Council President Freeman and Counselor Smith for their work on that committee. Tonight, I was not planning to get into the substance of the Charter Review Committee's recommendation. They did make a recommendation at the May 5 meeting to move forward with a version of the Charter Revision format-wise, based on the League of Oregon Cities. But substance-wise, not a lot of changes. I think a pretty, much more readable document. But what I wanted to do is confirm with council on a proposed timeline on how you folks want to handle this. It's totally up to you. I would like to stick generally to the timeframe, but if you wanted to do a public hearing before the work session or not, as you can see in my staff report, my suggested proposed timeline would be to have a city council work session on June 8. And before I skip there, we have tentatively scheduled the annual evaluations for the city manager and the city attorney. And the city manager's evaluation would be at 6:00 PM that night with the mayor out of town on June 1. So it would be 6:00 PM with the actual council work session on charter on June 8. On June 15, a public hearing. On July 6, the council meeting to review and give direction. And then if necessary, a fourth meeting on July 20 to make the final decision if that's necessary. We might do that in a total of three meetings. So like I said, if you feel like you'd rather have a public hearing before the work session or however you wouldn't like to do it, it's totally up to you. But I would like to kind of be done with it by towards the end of July to give me time to put together all the paperwork with regard to the ballot title and explanatory statement. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The recommendation is to give, just give directions on any changes that you might want to make to that and confirm the timeline.
All right, thank you for the staff report or the recommended timeline for the Charter Review process.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So Shannon, just for clarity, I know with COVID-19 and the Charter Review Committee itself, we had the opportunity for public testimony through Zoom. We did hear from some people who felt, you know, that we should have stalled or, you know, extended the timeline for public hearings to be in-person. We decided to maintain our schedule to move this forward and not to create, you know, additional delays on the staff end. So I guess really where I'm going with this is we have a public hearing on June 15. And I know we have to notice those. And obviously, anytime someone could come and give public testimony at our July 6 meeting. But should we have the, I guess my question is, should we have the opportunity for an additional timeframe for a public hearing also on July 6? So people would have potentially two times. Or if they couldn't meet the June 15 public hearing, they could come to July 6. Notice that it's a public hearing as well.
Sure. And that's totally up to council. That's not a bad idea at all. It gives opportunity twice for people. We obviously felt the, you know, the chairs, the chairs decided that it would be better to move forward with the schedule. That was my recommendation. If we get close on time and something goes wrong, we're waiting two more years, you know, I mean, at least have a free election. So I didn't want to get too tied up on the timeframe. But it did, unfortunately, with COVID-19, we had planned for a lot more outreach until this thing hit us. So the idea of having two chances for the public hearing is a great idea.
Okay, that sounds like a good add. Thank you, Council President Freeman, for making that suggestion. So we have more opportunity for public input. We know that people are busy in the summer and even with things being different this year, we expect that it's going to be a challenge for people to get to places or make time. So if we have two opportunities, definitely an improvement. I am texting with Counsel Herrera, who is understandably frustrated with not being able to get the audio to work after the testing that was done earlier today. I did ask him if he was okay with the timeline and he said, I am good with having a meeting and the timeline. So wanted to let folks know that he is good with that part of it and will have additional input, especially when we have the conversation about the substance of the Charter Review during the work session and then during our regularly scheduled public council meetings. Anybody else? And I've got to go back to my Zoom so I can see everybody. Looking at my notes. Counsel Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So as Mr. Johnson mentioned, we do already have work sessions reviewed, the reviews scheduled for the 8th and the 15th. Would we be doing that in addition to those? For instance, one at 6 and then one at 7? Or I just wanted a little bit of clarity for that.
I'm sorry, on which date?
On June 8th and 15th.
Right, so the June 8th is, at 6:00 PM, we have a city manager evaluation at 6:00 PM. And then that, the council work session for the charter would be at 7:00 PM on June 8. And that's work session kind of setting to not necessarily take public testimony. And then the June 15 would be the public hearing part. I mean, and like I said, you can change that however you would like. I thought maybe it'd be appropriate for council to kind of get a handle on this working with Counselor Smith and Counsel President Freeman and myself, who were at all the meetings, so that we could give you a feel for kind of what we went through and do that in a work session format. But if you would like to have that open to the public instead, that's fine. Again, however you'd like to do it.
Okay, would it be sufficient if we have like a 7 to 7:30 closed council work session and then 7:30 to 8:30 or whatever, open to the public for the public hearing? Since this is a little bit weird as far as our timeframe? If we wanted to have two and yet still have our closed conversation?
Right. So you could choose to have the June 8 meeting as a combination work session, public hearing, and then a second public hearing on June 15. I would think that that would be appropriate. And you could do that either that way or you can have two hearings on June 5th and July 6th, however you'd like to handle it.
So to Counsel Reed's point, oh, go ahead, Counsel, if you want to follow.
No, I was just going to say thank you for the clarification, so I'm good. Thank you.
So to Counsel Reed's point, one of the ideas was to do the work session so we can hear from, and we can schedule for committee members to come and help present at the work session so we can hear how this went and what the information was that was presented and the final recommendation. And then follow up with two public hearings. I heard that we were going to try to include them as our two regular session city council meetings on June 15th and then July 6. So that way we'd be a little bit more spread out, but more time for digesting the information. We could add an additional step of a public hearing during or after the work session. So that's two different ways we could go or add a third one. But I really appreciate the recommendation that we go ahead with public hearings at both of the city council meetings specifically on the 15th and the 6th. Does that help? I'm getting a head nod. Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think part of the goal with the work session originally is that A, everyone gets a good idea of what we're doing. And then we also talked about different ways of getting the outreach. Because one of the things that we've found is that public hearings in-person are not well-attended. And with something as important as this is, I think it's critical, we continue to do some of these additional outreach, whether it be social media, whether it be utilizing the people that were, are a part of the committee. And so we didn't have a ton of time to do that because of COVID. But when it got down to it, we had a lot more responses. So as part of the work session, what I would like to see is some of those different ideas of outreach so that we can get much more people involved with it and familiarize themselves with what we're bringing out and any changes that need to be made. But I don't want to just slide back into the, we'll show up on this day at this time and then we're not going to get the reach that we really need to do on this particular factor. So that's just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good ideas. Appreciate that. Counsel President Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And to follow up a couple of things, during the Charter Review, and especially with COVID, we did say multiple times that we would have two public hearings at two council meetings. So I want to make sure that what we communicated during Charter Review is something that we're carrying forward outside of Charter Review. And then my other question, comment, suggestion is, is we also had the Spanish translator or interpreter also, which we had great participation from our Latinx community. And so I'm hoping that with the two public hearings that we have, we also have that opportunity to either be Facebook Live with the translator so we can ensure that the people that have been following along in our Charter Review, again, have an opportunity, if they so choose, to participate in these conversations as well. So I want to make sure that all of this wonderful technology that we have been using through COVID, we can continue, like Counselor Smith said, to make sure that we are doing our outreach and we are reaching people that may never, ever walk into our council chambers, but they're willing to participate through other social media means. And I just want to make sure that we continue to utilize that platform to hear from our community members. So I just want to make sure we both have it in English and in Spanish available for continued participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Good idea. So for the work session and then the two public hearings, to make sure that we have bilingual access. Okay, that sounds like a good plan. Anything else? Okay. Does the sound work? David, can you get the sound clearer for Counsel Herrera? It's doing the So we're still having some difficulties with the sound quality coming in. Okay, try again. David is frozen. Okay, we're still getting intermittent. Okay, is there, while they work on Counsel Herrera's connection, anyone else? And I got from Counsel Kohler, I have no problem with what Counselors Smith and Freeman are suggesting. Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Counsel President Freeman?
Thank you. I just want to make sure that by adding the second public hearing on July 6, we'll still have adequate time for our city attorney and staff to work towards the final review on July 20th and then make sure everything is ready after that timeframe for
Okay, Counsel Freeman, he just cut out. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, following up on Counsel President Freeman's suggestion, that won't be a difficult for me as long as it's on July 6. Because we'll either, we'll have a good handle on it by then and you can make the final decision that night even with the public hearing. And even if you can't, then you definitely would be by July 20. So that suggestion will not be any kind of problem for me in getting this resolved on time.
Great. All right. Sounds like we have consensus and to move forward with the timeline with one addition, with a public hearing added to the July 6 regular session and to make sure that we have bilingual access to all three, the work session and both of the public hearings. All right. That will then take us to item 8C, Resolution Ratifying the Community Development Director's Submittal of a Proposal to Receive Funds for Small Business Assistance from Business Oregon. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Brown?
Yes, thank you. So we got notice from Business Oregon that they have been directed by the legislature to get some emergency business assistance funds out into the communities post haste. We were notified, we received notification like on Monday of last week. And the deadline for submittal was actually today at the end of business. So basically, what this requires is a one-to-one match that local jurisdictions or other nonprofits have to match dollar-for-dollar the funds that would come to those jurisdictions based on the criteria that they establish in their program. Now, we have, as you know, we have committed the use of our funds that we get from Community Prosperity from Marion County to assist small businesses. Prosperity from the Marion County to assist small businesses. We are just finalizing the notices. They actually will go out tomorrow. And so we went through the whole process of evaluating all the submittals. We actually drew the names out of the bucket. Chris was the lucky contest manager there with, of course, witnesses. Anyway, so we have committed $45,000 in our local funds to this program. And so our submittal would be asking the state to match that $45,000 with an additional And we have submitted the application that shows that we believe the intent closely matches, even though, for example, they target sole proprietorships and their thresholds are slightly different than our thresholds. They have up to 25 employees, for example, and the maximum amount of grant is more than our $2,500. Anyway, so we put together our application and pitched our program in the best light that I felt like we could do. And we submitted that on Friday, and we got a confirming email saying that they had received it and that they planned to announce the contest winners. It's not a contest, but announce their awardees by later this week, hopefully. So because of the deadline situation, we had to submit it, and we're asking for council ratification of that submittal. Be happy to answer any questions that you would have.
Thank you, Nate. Are there any questions about the submission for the additional funds through Business Oregon? Counselor Parsons? Unmute.
There you go. Sorry, it was going all over the place. So Nate, I was on a conference call, I believe it was Thursday, because the mayor was busy, and they talked about this very same thing and how there's going to be another $5 million and another $3.5 million, another $5 million available for cities. He said, basically, he said that yes, they did say one-on-one match. He says most likely, they probably won't do that. They may just award the money. So that's a good thing. And especially coming up with the other monies that he's talking about putting into these communities, they will not be a one-on-one match. So that's a good thing for Kaiser, that we can apply for other monies down the road knowing that we should be able to get some money. Because the way he talked, every community was going to get something. So I just wanted to let you know.
Okay.
And that's very good news. And the other thing that I asked earlier of the city manager was whether or not, you know, as he discussed, the funds that we awarded through our process today would be able to be used as match. And we did not want to wait to find out if that was going to be the case. Getting $45,000 out as quickly as possible is very important to the businesses that are receiving those funds. So that's good news, Counselor Parsons. Thank you for sharing that, that this likely could go forward in either regard. And the faster we can get money to our businesses, the better off we're going to be. Mr. Brown, did you have anything else to add to that?
No, it's, so we were on the conference call. They actually had a teleconference thing, and we listened to it. There were lots of questions and a lot of, well, we're working on the answer. Because they're doing it so quickly, we're not exactly sure, they're not exactly sure how it's going to roll out. So we just wanted to make sure that we had our, our hat was thrown into the ring.
Well, thank you for responding very, very quickly to make sure that our businesses would be eligible for this fund. That was a very rapid turnaround, and much appreciated. All right. So if there's nothing else, our Council President Parsons, Freeman, would you please put a motion on the table?
Sure, Madam Mayor, but can I seek clarity first? So on the bottom of the staff report, there's a recommendation, and then I have a resolution. So is it the recommendation first and then the resolution? I just, because they're a little bit different, so I just want to make sure.
Actually, I think you can move to adopt the resolution without the recommendation on the staff report.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Okay, Counsel President Freeman?
Okay, I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R 2020 ratifying the community development director's submittal of a proposal to receive funds for a small business assistant, for small business assistance from Business Oregon.
Second?
It's removed and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution 2020 ratifying the community development director's submittal of a proposal to receive funds for small business assistance from Business Oregon. Further discussion? So I have one, one point, and that is, as we make these funds available, we will go through an open process once again for people to submit applications. Would that be correct? And then on top of that, would we also make sure that we are getting these funds to businesses that did not receive the random funds that we gave out today? Would those two statements be correct?
Yes. So we will keep, for example, those that were not, that qualified but that were not awarded, they will be considered. The ones that didn't qualify, if they qualify for the new program, they will also be considered. But we will also have additional outreach. We will go through, part of the program is to target historically disadvantaged populations. So we are, the first round, we are going to target, we're going to target those disadvantaged populations, women-owned business, minority-owned businesses. And not, the award criteria is not, you have to be a women-owned business or whatever, but our special outreach will be focused on getting the word out to those populations. And then we will follow that up with a more general announcement. We have, we put on the list that, a list of organizations that we're going to be working with, but, and of course, the chamber by default. I had it on the list, and Danielle acknowledged that it was on the list. Anyway, so we will, we will work with our chamber, we'll work with the Kaiser Times, we'll put it on our social media, all of those, all those things we have at our disposal, we will make sure that we use in addition to targeting specific organizations. The Latino Business Alliance, et cetera, those kinds of things. There's a women-owned business association. Anyway, so that's, that's the program.
All right, thank you very much. I did get a comment from Counselor Herrera who says I do applaud the outreach and a comment, a question about the different terminology between disadvantaged and underserved. Is the language that we're using part of the language from Business Oregon, or is it language that we chose?
Well, that's, that's straight out of their announcement.
Okay, so we're copying the language that was in the announcement from Business Oregon, and they use the term disadvantaged. I've also heard the governor's office use the term underserved. In my work, I understand the decision refers to the specific organizations that are the different types of businesses that are defined under the DBE or disadvantaged business enterprise definitions on the federal level, which is the minority-owned, women-owned, service-disabled, veteran-owned businesses, and emerging small businesses. So these are federal definitions as well, just to be clear. But in any event, we'll be trying to make sure we get the money to underserved businesses and be effective in our outreach as far as possible.
So the language they use is, under the program values, they say, ensure that historically disadvantaged individuals who own businesses have access to these funds. Anyway, so they use the term, and there's a couple more places they use the term historically disadvantaged.
Okay. So we're copying the language, but as we understand it, we will be making sure that we reach out as, as we have done with the program. We have just drawn the names for today and go as far as we can to get money to businesses because people's families rely on being able to work, and that's what this is about. All right, any further discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Counsel President Freeman?
Thank you. I just want to echo comments made to just appreciate staff for, you know, jumping on, on these opportunities when they arise. As most people in government and even in private business know, these are some interesting times right now that we're all working under, and there's a lot of money being talked about at the state level, at the federal level, and sometimes emails are very overwhelming for someone who works in government, who gets tons of emails every day about potential funding, especially from the federal level, and wondering if those funds are actually going to make it to our state and other states. So I just really appreciate the, you know, the flexibility and the nimbleness of staff to really jump on this, to make sure that we're doing everything we can for our business community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please unmute and signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. That will take us then to item 8. Counselor Herrera, would you go ahead, if you can hear, and go ahead and text me your vote so I can have it on for the record? And I will read that to our city recorder when it comes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes. I'm here.
And that was a yes.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, it's cutting in and out.
Your connection is unstable. Nate's not.
I'm only getting every fourth or fifth word. Yes. Yeah. All right, we're going to move forward then. Counselor Herrera, we are not able to get the clear audio. So I know David is still working, so I will continue to read your texts. So, mine too. All right, I will make sure I speak up.
Okay. Okay, next committee, man.
On item 8D, which is the municipal judge report, counselor check-in. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, city attorney.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and counsel. As you may know, for the last several years, we've been doing counselor check-in with municipal judge. The mayor points two counselors each year. And the timeframe is by June 1, when the mayor points the next two, that the two previous give a verbal report to counsel on checking in with the municipal court judge. Due to COVID-19, the court has been closed for two, three months now. They are scheduled to reopen on June 24. However, currently, we don't have any trials scheduled. There's not a requirement that counselors observe a trial, but oftentimes the counselors want to see a trial in addition to arrangements. When we do have trials, the court clerk tries to schedule those in groups to be efficient with the court's time. And consequently, we may only have, we'll have six trials in one day, 15-minute trials. And if you're not available for that, then it may be another month before. And so consequently, the date we chose, up to you folks, is to extend that all the way October. My suggested motion was October 19. And certainly, we had hoped that you'd be able to do that before then, but I didn't want to have to come back with another extension. So the proposal is a minute motion to move to extend the evaluation process to October 19, 2020, when the reports shall be given and the mayor would announce to the counselors for the next coming year. So that's the proposal, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions on the staff report? Seeing none. Counsel President Freeman?
I move that the Kaiser City Council extend the evaluation process to October 19, 2020 for the municipal judge when the report shall be given and when the mayor shall announce the counselors for the upcoming year.
Counselor Herrera just texted me a second. Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? All in favor, please unmute and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did I hear from everybody? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously. Hearing and reading none. Counselor, Mr. Johnson? Mr. Johnson, we can't hear you. You have to unmute.
Sorry about that. I just muted it. I assume you meant on that last statement that Counselor Herrera joined in the yes vote on that, or do you have that?
He didn't text me a yes.
Okay. And so we will need to get that in the previous vote, if we can, before the end of the meeting, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Counselor Herrera, if you would please text a yes. So I just got that.
Okay. And was that the same as the city recorder have it for the previous motion, too?
Counselor Herrera, were you a yes on the resolution for the community development director's submittal? Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. That will take us then to the consent calendar. Counsel President Freeman, would you please read the items on tonight's consent?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have two items on the consent calendar tonight. Items 9A is a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign public bodywork order contract with Galt Foundation, Inc. for temporary staffing services. And 9B is the approval of the May 4, 2020 city council regular session minutes.
Thank you. Are there any polls? Hearing and reading none. Counsel President Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt the consent calendar, items 9A and B.
Second from Counselor Herrera. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, baby.
And a C from Counselor Herrera. Are there any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to our council liaison reports, and I will start. Let me look at the screen. I'll work from the top down, and this way we have the Brady Bunch. So Counsel President Freeman, would you like to lead off?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pretty quiet. I did attend the charter review committee on May 5. And again, thanks to all the committee members for doing amazing work. We had our budget meeting, May 11th and 12th. Amazing job by staff and our chair, Counselor Parsons. I think in my 11 years on budget, I think that was the quickest we've ever done that. So maybe Zoom is what we do for budget. I don't know, but it's just, it was very nice. So thank you. On Thursday this past week, I attended the Marion County Commissioner's breakfast. We hadn't been meeting due to COVID, but we met this past week in the council chambers, practicing our social, physical distancing, as I like to call it. It was really nice. It was really nice to meet with our partners. We have a very strong relationship with Marion County, and it's just really nice to see everyone on that monthly basis. And I so appreciate that. And then the other thing, because it was via Zoom this year, which was a little interesting, was the mayor's prayer breakfast that happened earlier this month. Just, it's always an amazing event, and I'm so honored by all the people that speak at that event and their heartfelt prayers for the city, for everyone, from our teachers to our city staff, to our first responders. Always a great event, and really appreciate Pastor Dominguez sharing a lot of that in Spanish as well. And I just think that we're doing such a phenomenal job in outreach in that regard. And so hats off to the mayor and the Kaiser Chamber for another fabulous mayor prayer breakfast. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, and definitely a shout out to the Kaiser Chamber. This is a chamber event that is put on every year. This was the 22nd annual. And some of them have been recorded in the past, but this is the first one we've done with entirely broadcast. And we had speakers, including Pastor Dominguez and Rabbi Perlstein, and Dr. Rohila, who also offered a prayer in Sanskrit. People, you know, leaders like Shaney Starr and Meredith Mooney and Lisa Walker. And I'm going to forget somebody here, but it was an overall well-rounded event of people through our community, sharing with our community. So I would encourage people to go to the website, if you are so inclined, and watch the event. Thank you. Counselor Smith, you're up next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now, I have a lot going on. Obviously, it's been fairly quiet. And appreciated Counselor Parsons' excellent work at the Budget Committee. I know that that was kind of a a big challenge she was a little concerned about, but just knocked it out of the park, and I thought she has technology at a very high level. So thank you again for that. We have a Kaiser Public Arts Commission meeting this week. And Tracy, I just have one question, because one thing says Wednesday, May 20, and the other thing says Tuesday, the 19th. Could you clarify what day that's on?
It is on Wednesday, May 20.
Okay.
Change of date. And it will be a Zoom meeting.
Excellent.
Sorry about that.
No worries. Just wanted to make sure I said the right way. So we'll be doing that via Zoom. And that's pretty much all I have right now. Obviously, not a lot going on, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor, read.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was also participating in the mayor's prayer breakfast and was really impressed with that event and just the diversity of voices that were heard in that. And that was, that was a really, a privilege to be a part of. One of the things that I did in these past weeks is I gave blood. That was the first time in this particular era that I did that. And the American Red Cross is really hurting for blood and bleeding for blood, maybe, no. Anyway, it was, it was a very safe experience, and they were, they were run very professionally. And I would recommend that anybody who is able to to contribute to our community in that way, because they do a really good job with that. We had a Kaiser Heritage Foundation meeting. And I don't have a whole lot to report on that, because I haven't listened to it to take notes on it, because I was in a budget meeting. But that is, that is a meeting that I am a part of as well. And we have a personal policy, a personnel policy meeting coming up. So that is pretty much what I've been doing. And then, of course, there are all the continuing challenges with online learning. And we've got about three weeks left of the school year. And so any parents out there, grandparents, any, anybody who influences kids in any way, please get on them to get their, their things done and to have the self-discipline it takes to finish strong. And this is at all levels. This is a challenge for students at all levels. And it's certainly a challenge for parents and other influencers at all levels. So, takes a village, and so we need to get these kids, give these kids the best chance that they can to get credit for the semester. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you so much. Counselor Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I had budget Monday and Tuesday, and I thought, considering the circumstances, I thought it went really well via Zoom. So, and now that's done for another year. Wednesday, there was a chamber board meeting, which I attended via Zoom. A lot of emotions running in the chamber right now. They're dealing with a lot of issues. But they were very grateful for the ask that they received, that we gave them from the top dollars. And they, you know, will start as soon as they can, hiring back Cory, probably in mid-June, end of June, to kind of help with things that are going on right now. As you know, there's no gatherings until end of September, so doesn't sound like there's going to be a Kaiser Fest this year. Other than, let's see, and then Thursday, I had the conference call. And there were several, there were a couple key speakers on there. One was the guy from the unemployment office, I think his name was, Mr. Allen. I can't remember his first name, who stated that they have 87% of claims have been processed, but none of those are the sole proprietors or gig workers. Those are all the ones who lost their jobs. He said that the process to pay those people has been arduous because IT is having to reconfigure the system, and they just haven't been able to get it done. So that was kind of what he said. And then they talked about how they need to get more money out into the community. So there's these federal dollars that are coming that has been promised. And they want to get them out into the communities as soon as possible. So there, that's what I was talking about. Another, I think it's like another $13.7 million altogether that they're going to be distributing. Let me, and then coming up, I don't think I have anything coming up, not until June 1st, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just kudos to Tim and then all the people involved in putting the budget together. That was, that was pretty amazing. Thank you very much. I've been on several different conference calls, coupled with LOC and, well, chamber greeters a couple of times since we last met. The prayer breakfast was, I think, a big success. I'm sorry, though, it's just not the same not being there. But one of the big things that I was involved in this week is the Kaiser Community Dinner Committee met, and we've decided on May 27, we're going to hold Kaiser Community Dinner. And it's going to be from 4:00 to 6:00, and it'll be a drive-by event. And so you'll, you enter St. Edward's complex by the light and drive all the way around the building. And there'll be a little tent set up, and we will hand the people their food through the windows. So we'll see how that works. Again, that's from 4:00 to 6:00 PM on May 27. So that's coming right up next week. I did attend the Commissioners' Breakfast. It's always good to be able to be there and see our Commissioners and how they work so hard for us. And we even talked about the urban growth expansion. And then next weekend, or coming up is the Memorial Day Weekend. Please, everybody have a safe and happy Memorial Day Weekend.
Thank you, Counselor Kohler. I do have one question about the community dinner. Will walk-up be available for those who do not have vehicles?
We discussed that, and that's a possibility.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that. And Counselor Freeman said, "Thank you, Counselor Kohler, for bringing the community dinner back during this time of great need." We both have the need to, for good food, but we also have that need for, for community, that sense of what's really important to us. Counselor.
Madam Mayor, there was a question that was, that was texted to me and said, "Do we need any help for the community dinner?" And that's a really good question, and we discussed that quite a bit. And we determined this time that the committee is going to take care of the cooking and the distributing the food, because we won't have a full dining hall. That way, we limit the number of people that'll be doing that, so we won't need additional help for the distribution or preparation of the food this time. But, but we, we felt very strongly that one of our goals was to help feed the community, and so we wanted to go ahead and do that. Thank you for those willing to help, although we don't need the help this time.
That's Kaiser for you. That's what we do. Counselor Herrera asked me to read a few things into the record. He wanted to let everybody know that a McNary High School senior, Isabel Lopez, was picked to earn a Tomorrow's Leadership Today Scholarship, a program that honors overall excellence within the credit union's 4,000 teen members at the Oregon State Credit Union. She is a McNary senior, and she was the only Marion County recipient. So congratulations to Isabel Lopez. And she was a former mentored student. Counselor Herrera, want to note that McNary graduation is tentatively scheduled for August 7 at the Fairgrounds. We don't know if that's going to be able to, how that's going to proceed, but please, all the parents and students and community members, watch the website from the school district council for what will be happening going forward to celebrate this year's Class of 2020, truly a class that's going to go down in history. Mano a mano has had an increase of needs, serving over 1,500 meals and helping with over 2,000 food boxes since March, which is very, very exciting that they've been able to help. We know that there's great need, and we want to thank Mano a mano for their hard work to get food to families in our community. Counselor Herrera also participated in Zoom meetings with Naleo, which is the National Association of Latino E.O., elected officials, I remembered. With a duck party Zoom, I'm going to assume that has something to do with UVO, and the League of Oregon City Zoom meeting as well. And gracias. Thank you very much, Counselor Herrera. And thank you for texting me your report as well and on the activity in the community for everybody that we are able to serve. So thank you. Just because we are not meeting in person doesn't mean we're not doing a whole lot in our community. Our community is open, active, and many of our businesses are open. I just want to add a few things. Let me go over to my little handy-dandy sheet here. Scroll down, scroll down. On the 5th, I had a meeting with the Behavioral Health Director, Steve Allen, regarding the community impact of the ad campaign that we know triggered PTSD, anxiety, and other mental health problems for people in our community. I asked for the governor's communications team to work with behavioral health on the messaging that goes out, so we can communicate what we need to know, but do it in a way that is sensitive to the needs of people in our community who have mental health and, you know, issues and concerns. I've noticed a change in the messaging. I think it also goes with the, the change in the governor's executive order. But I would applaud the change in the messaging that is very, much more targeted to how we can protect our health and some of the less, I don't have a better word, brutal messaging that came out earlier on. Also, on the 5th, we had a meeting of the Executive Committee for the Mid-Blamette Valley Homeless Alliance. A lot of work has continued. I think you've been reading about it in the paper, where very vulnerable members of our community who are homeless and have underlying medical conditions have been housed at local hotels. The Community Action Agency has done a magnificent job working with care providers throughout the community to house 125 vulnerable people, and they are receiving, looking to receive more housing dollars, up to 175 more people. This is important not only for the health and well-being of these very vulnerable community members, but also helps stop the spread of that, of COVID and other communicable diseases that are prevalent in our community. On the 6th, I participated in the Marion County Update Teleconference, and then we also had one this morning talking about the data of where we are at as a county in providing services for people in our community for very, very low hospitalization rates, for declining numbers of cases, and very rapid response in terms of contact tracing. As the meeting we had earlier, they were talking about a 95% contacts within 24 hours. This is particularly among some of our underserved communities and our rural communities that have hotspots. And they've done a wonderful job, not only contacting people, but also getting good information in culturally relevant and language-specific means. So not only just Spanish, but also the correct dialect, so people can really understand what we're talking about and how to protect themselves, their families, and their communities. A huge congratulations and a thank you to the Marion County Health Department and all of the partners that have helped protect the health of people in our community. On the 13th, the Strategic Economic Development Corporation held a webinar featuring the University of Oregon economist, Tim Dewey. The webinar is posted on their website and is highly recommended for everyone to view. Some of the key takeaways. The power to open the community and our economy is with us, you and me, as we support our local businesses. Because struggles were not caused by a structural flaw, which has happened in other recessions, but because of the need to protect the health of our community. And because of that, we are seeing signs of strength already with unclosed sectors and those that are opening now in trade, manufacturing, construction, and now with opening of retail. We are going to start seeing some change, some improvements there. Again, it's going to, a lot of it's going to depend locally on what we do locally. The Chambers of Commerce and other economic development groups have been active, reaching out to and working with our business community and traded sector. Many of you heard that the, the plan from Marion County to move into Phase 1, which opens up some additional sectors of businesses, has been delayed. Those conversations are ongoing. I know that the Commissioners have been working very closely with Oregon Health Authority and Governor's Office on moving our plan forward, making refinements as necessary, and continuing to serve the community in increasing the level of service to protect the health and the well-being of members of our community. So nobody's sitting around waiting and hoping. Everybody's very active and making sure that we're doing the best that we can to continually improve. On Friday, I think it was already mentioned, there was a League of Oregon Cities Conference Call with the Office of Emergency Management, the Oregon Health Authority, the Governor's Office, and the National League of Cities. And those conference calls have been occurring weekly to make sure we stay connected, not only across the state, but also with our counterparts in other regions of the country. That's all I've got there. Coming up, we have the, I will be going to the Marion County Commission, I am planning to, on the 20th, and I bring that up under new business or other business. On the 21st, the LCDC, which is the Land Conservation and Development Commission, will be having some meetings regarding the statewide transportation strategy for cap and trade and the statewide transportation strategy. And I will be going to present some information from our Metropolitan Planning Organization regarding the projects and how we want them to move forward. We're planning a Facebook Live Coffee with Kathy, and the speakers for that have yet to be announced. I've been a little tied up this weekend, so I hope to get that out shortly. Those have been wonderful opportunities to hear from people, not only from the city, but also from the Chamber of Commerce. um, not only from the city, but also from, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, Fire District, uh, the Latino community, and transit. So we look forward to having another opportunity to get good information after the community. On the 26th, SCATS, the Salem Kaiser Area Transportation Study will be meeting. And, um, on 26th, also, also we will have the Personnel Policy Committee. And that is all I have for my updates. So let me get my camera back up so I can see what everybody's doing. And, uh, we will then go to other business. This time is provided to allow the Mayor, City Council, members or staff an opportunity to bring new or old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy?
I have nothing. Thank you, Chris.
Bill?
Uh, nothing tonight. Thank you, Chris.
Uh, Mr. Wood?
I have nothing as well.
Chief Teague?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Brown?
Um, yes, I have, I too have just a couple of things. One is, one is that, um, we've received the, the calendar for the project, the transportation, impacts of growth on transportation system. And right now it is calendared out through the end of September. Um, and so basically, uh, the, the first week of June, the consultants are going to meet with staff and review with them the initial concepts, um, to prioritize the projects, to prepare planning level cost estimates, and to identify alternative funding options. Um, there's going to be a TAC meeting, a Technical Advisory Committee meeting at the end of June. So the program, the program, the study is moving forward and, um, which brings me to my other thing, and that is, tonight is my last City Council meeting with the City of Kaiser. And so, um, as you can imagine, it is with a lot of mixed emotions. Um, there's a lot of history here. Um, some would, some would call it my reign is coming to an end. Some would call it my legacy is ending. Um, anyway, it has been, it has been a great honor for me. I have learned and grown a lot over this last 16 and a half years. Um, but, so my final words will come from one of my cherished literature, um, fantasy novels, and that's Tolkien's, um, Lord of the Rings. When Bilbo Baggins tells the assembled party that "I don't know half of you half as well as I should like, and I like less than half of you half as well as you deserve." And with that, I'll say goodbye.
Well, Mr. Brown, I'm really not sure what that means, but I'm going to let you have it. Mr. Johnson?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Uh, anybody on City Council have any additional questions for staff that you didn't get to ask? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, it has truly been an honor and a privilege and a pleasure to work with you over the years. I'm going to miss you terribly and thank you. You've made a difference for Kaiser.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, um, I do have one item I would like to walk on tonight, and that is, um, a letter of support addressed to the Governor to, for Marion County to submit to, uh, the Governor's Office for the, uh, community roadmap for limited reopening of Marion County. This is the plan that they did turn in and they are continuing to revise to help move Marion County into Phase One of, uh, which is the next step of reopening more sectors of businesses throughout Kaiser and our Marion County area. As most of you know, uh, 31 counties have already moved into, um, Phase One, which opens up, um, a limited number of business sectors that are not already open, uh, such as, uh, salons, gyms, uh, restaurants, bars, and I'm missing something in there. Uh, and also to increase the number of gatherings from 10 to 25. So Marion County has worked very hard to work across the entire county, urban, rural, underserved communities, uh, migrant communities, the, uh, assisted living and elder care, uh, faith community. And they have taken all of that information plus, uh, commitments and the assistance of our, uh, health providers throughout the region. With that, I have drafted a letter that's right to, uh, for your approval and support to submit to Marion County on Wednesday morning during the regular session, which is, uh, May 20th. So, um, Mr. Johnson, do I need to get a motion to, um, take up the matter?
Yes, Madam Mayor, you need to have a motion to suspend the rules first.
Counselor President Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council suspend the rules uh, in order to discuss the support of the letter to Governor Brown, uh, through Marion County.
Second?
Okay. Counselor reads seconds. Uh, it's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council suspend the rules and take up the matter of the support for Marion County. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Um, I'll wait for, uh, Counselor Herrera, go ahead and type yes when you get a chance, if you would, please. And we opposed. Okay. Uh, passes, motion passes unanimously. Um, I'll let you know I get a yes from Counselor Herrera. Um, with that, um, I would ask that the City Council, um, I did send out a copy of the letter. Um, I would be open to edits, um, if you think through additions or, um, things that would make our case stronger. Um, with your support, I'd like to assign this on behalf of our entire City Council, supporting Marion County for the work that has been done to help our county move forward in reopening more sectors safely and responsibly. Counselor President Freeman, uh, would you be willing to put a motion on the table to support the letter?
Sure. I move that the Kaiser City Council, uh, support the letter drafted by the Mayor uh, in support of Marion County to be presented Wednesday, May 20th, uh, to support the Phase One reopening.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council authorized the Mayor to sign the letter, um, supporting Marion County for the Phase One reopening plan and to present to Marion County at their May 20 regular session meeting. Are there any questions or further discussion? For the record, um, if people want to read the plan, it is on the Marion County website. Um, just click on the, um, COVID-19 on the website and that will take you to their resource page. And the, uh, the main ninth version of that plan is there and it will continue to be updated as they refine it for, um, additional consideration by the Governor's Office. So I just want to make sure people know that, that's out of the public domain. Um, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
And I don't have a yes, uh, yet from Counselor Herrera, so we'll show him, um, uh, absent at this point. Um, hopefully he will be able to, um, text in. Are there any opposed? There are none. Uh, motion passes, um, six yes and, uh, one absent. Counselor Herrera, until we get a yes. Thank you very much. I appreciate that and I'll be happy to carry this. And if anybody would else like to attend the meeting, it is a public meeting. I'm not sure how they're doing it yet. I'll have to go and look at the website if they're doing all Zoom or I believe they're on, they may be on site. Um, written communications, I don't have anything additional tonight. Um, agenda input, we will meet on campus on, uh, June 6th, 7:00 PM in regular session. We will then meet June 8th, uh, 6:00 PM in executive session and 7:30 PM. Um, I believe earlier we talked about 7:00 PM, but, um, on here it says 7:30 and I would like to give us the time to be able to, um, not rush, to do a work session on the City of Kaiser Charter Amendments. Is there a reason for this to be 7:00 PM versus the 7:30 that's on the agenda, Tracy? I believe that we, Shannon and I talked about 7:30 to allow enough time for the executive session, but we will confirm that time. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, Madam Mayor, that was my fault earlier in the meeting. Uh, I neglected to look at that and Tracy is correct. We have a new format for the City Manager, City Attorney Evaluation this year. And so after some discussion in, in-house, we felt it was appropriate to go ahead and have, uh, the work session start at 7:30 instead of 7:00 to allow plenty of time. Obviously, if you get done early, you can get, you have a little bit of a break before the work session starts.
All right. So we will be convening the work session at 7:30 PM on June 8th for the charter review. And then on June 15th, we will meet in regular session again on campus, uh, right here at the Civic Center. And that will include a public hearing regarding the, um, the charter amendments, the charter review recommendations. That is all I have. Is there anything else for the good of the order? I'm looking at my Brady Bunch. And text, I have nothing more. Uh, it is 8:22 and we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.